So this is an ad hoc subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at possible revision to the zoning regulation related to child daycare centers. I'm Anna Tabashnik. Chapin Bryce, are you here?
I am. Thank you.
Galen Wells, are you here? And Tammy Langgalls, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we also have Michelle. So as a reminder, this was a proposal that came out of public hearing last year when we did the Planning and Zoning rewrite to allow for either to allow ways for their for group childcare homes that are currently in residential areas to expand somehow. Michelle looked at the regulations. I looked at the regulations. Michelle did a bunch of calls to providers in the community. We both spoke with Mary Oster who is the head of Norwalk's Early Childhood Program about the need. And one thing that we identified was that the zoning code currently only allows daycare centers, the definition of which is a daycare that is more than 12 kids fundamentally. We only allow them in the commercial zones, but that is not required by OEC. That's a zoning requirement. So the question was, could we allow them to some degree in the residential zones thereby allowing existing providers to add a couple of kids and become centers or new providers that want to be centers and operate in a residential neighborhood to be able to do so? There is an existing requirement, state requirement, that the smaller programs, family daycares and group daycares have to be allowed as of right in residential zones. So that's why you see here family daycare home permitted in all of these residential zones, group daycare permitted with limitations in all these residential zones. But then when it comes to child daycare center, not permitted, permitted via special permit, that is, that is totally allowed. We can technically allow child daycares in other zones via special permit. We're not required to do it as of right the way we are with family and group. So the idea was, could we put together a special permit system allowing the child daycare centers in these zones where it's currently not permitted to be permitted by special permit with limitations? That was the idea. Michelle, anything I missed? And we were asked, the subcommittee was asked to sort of draft up a proposal to bring back to the larger Planning and Zoning Commission. And that's where we're at.
Yeah, sounds like you covered everything there.
Okay, great. So I took normally when the city wants to propose an amendment to the zoning code, they put together a memo and then bring that memo to the commission. So I took a prior memo that the city that Brian Baker actually had put together about something else just a few months ago using that format and I edited it with what we had started to discuss. And this is sort of the format they use to like list out what the current regulation is, any additional text would be in red. Text that we were proposing to remove gets read and struck through. So the idea would be to revise this table, but instead of saying NP in these four places, it would say SPUL in these four places. So it'd be sort of the same as what we have over here. And then whenever there's a use that's permitted with limitations, after the use table in Article Four, there's a whole section with text that describes what the limitations are. So for example, this is what it currently says for child daycare centers, which is saying they're allowed in these certain zones and these are the requirements. And it also needs a special permit. And we know special permit requirements. There's a whole list of them that we have to consider impact on the neighborhood, traffic, noise. There's a bunch of other things on the list of special permit requirements. And then there are these two specific requirements that are specific to this use. So what I had put out was it was already the case that there was a maximum occupancy of 35 children. That's in the existing requirement for child daycare centers. But just changing it instead of saying there's a maximum occupancy of 35 children, and we know it's only in these zones, saying that for these zones that it's already allowed, keep the maximum occupancy of 35 children. And then adding that in in these newly allowed residential zones, there would be a maximum occupancy of 18 children. That was like a number that just threw out. We could change that. The building typology being consistent with the permitted structures in the zone that came, that language came from, I think, what we had for corner stores. And because corner stores was a similar thing that we built into the rewrite that wasn't previously allowed in these residential zones. And they did a memo and said, let's allow it. But with these requirements, we want it to like look the way the zone sort of looks. So I pulled that from there. Chapin had a question about whether we have to say anything about new versus existing structures. Do we need to speak to nonconforming structures? Michelle, I don't know if you have a thought on that, or if Chapin you want to expand that further, anybody?
I have one question before we go further. What, why are we limiting it to 18 children instead of 35?
We don't, we don't have to. It was just a number I threw out. So we could come back to that.
Yeah, I think it would make sense to go back to 35 children and the site itself would limit it. You know, there may only be room in that site for 18 children or 15 children, you know, given the parking, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I don't see that it makes sense for us to limit it in the outset.
Well, one, hi Galen, it's Tammy. I'm thinking that if this has to go for a special permit and a neighbor in a residential zone thinks they're going to be for 35 kids being dropped off next door every day, that they would want to oppose it before it even got off the ground. So maybe that's why you make it a smaller, more residential type number. I made some comments before too. I do think the size of the structure is going to limit what people can do. And 18 might probably even be a lot for anybody in a residential zone. But if we take this to a public hearing and ask for people's comments and then, you know, somebody comes forth, I can see the neighbors being very upset, saying, I don't want 35 people, 35 kids every day getting dropped off next to my house. And then they would turn it down.
Yeah, but the point I'm making is there are some sites where 35 kids would be no problem. And that probably the neighbors would see them as no problem. You know, if you had it like in West Milwaukee's end, Silvermine, you could get a residential site where there's where it's two and a half acres and there's lots of space for, you know, constructing a driveway, the drop off, playground, you know, adding on to the house structure to make it a bigger a bigger facility and it would work out well. Now there may be a smaller lot and a smaller structure where only 15 children could possibly be accommodated. But if there's a public hearing, the neighbors get to object and we see are there objections reasonable or not? Sometimes people object to things no matter what, you know?
Well, yes, we definitely know that. This, this proposed amendment, if the commission is up for moving it forward, there would be a public hearing about just this amendment. And if it passed, each time somebody applied for a special permit to do that, there would be an individual public hearing. And what I think I'm hearing from Galen is because the the capacity is self-limiting by the size of the site and the parking and the staffing, there's no reason to make the max for these zones any different than the max for these zones. And what I'm hearing from Tammy is that particularly thinking about the public hearing for the amendment itself and whether that is able to get community support or, you know, how it's perceived, that it might be beneficial to actually differentiate it from this group in some way.
30, 35 kids is bigger than any class of any Norwalk school really. So you're saying a whole grade worth of kids could descend on somebody's residential property. And I, I could see people objecting to that. So I, my goal would be to make this doable and not have everybody have to come for a special permit and then they get turned down before they even get going. But I mean, you can always adjust it. Hang on, I, excuse me one second.
This could also be something that we bring, that we sort of don't, nothing's finalized, but that we don't sort of finalize ourselves, but we bring this question to the commission. I think, you know, when I was talking about this with some of my neighbors and friends and parents, particularly people who didn't currently have small children, when they heard 18 children, they freaked out. And I had to continually remind people it would only be if 18 children could fit, like. Right, right.
But if we said, you know, it's always good, I think, to start out with a number that you can back away from and still be accomplishing a purpose. You know, if if we start with 35 children and everyone objects, you could say, oh, okay, 18, how about that? You know, we, then we've limited it. If we start with 18, we'll end up with
10. Yeah, well, it's currently already 12, but yeah. Chapin, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, no, I appreciate this discussion. That's one thing that comes to mind is, you know, I think when you initially laid this out, I was trying to look for ways for zoning to ensure that people were able to like take the opportunity that was available for their lot. So that kind of brings me towards that 35, but I totally see where Tammy's coming from on like being able to get this passed. That 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 might be too much of a sticking point for folks. And, you know, maybe it makes sense to have a number that is less than 35 for the initial proposal and, you know, Steve, after getting this passed, you know, after a year or so of having it out there, if it does, that number needs to be adjusted. Hopefully be a smaller amendment to the, to the regulations. Temper things a bit. Go ahead. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I have terrible tendency to interrupt and I apologize, Chapin. The thing I was going to say is that I was just talking to a friend of mine who just put her child in in daycare and in Stanford. And she's going to, her child is going to a daycare center. Now it's open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. But the children can come anytime and go anytime within that structure. So like very few children go from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. But they may go from 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM, or they may come at 9:00 PM and stay till six or seven PM, you know, depending on the work schedules of the parents. Is why they have to be in daycare. So it's not like a regular school where everyone comes and goes at the same time.
Is that, is that better or worse, Galen, though? If you're in a residential neighborhood and there's somebody next door coming and going all day long with 35 possibilities in and out, I would think that would make the neighbors anxious and upset and they would deny the application or, you know, they would argue against it.
Well, I think they're going to argue against it on those circumstances anyway. And as I say, it gives us room to back down.
Well, that's true. All right. Maybe we put a pin in the number and come back to that. I think we see you know, there's pluses and minuses to both, right? Doing it incremental. Chapin?
I was just going to add that when we do come back, I'm curious to understand like how we came to 35. I think that was in the prior regulations, which is why it's still 35. But I'm curious to know. Michelle, I don't know if you know offhand, but it'd be interesting to research like how 35 came to be and see if there's anything there that can help us find a number that's more suitable for a residential zone, be it 35 or 18 or something else along those lines.
Michelle, I also related to that, wanted to ask you, I was surprised by that as well because I know of a lot of childcare centers in Norwalk or maybe not a lot, but some that are well over 35. Some of those are because they're school-based, right? The accessory use incidental to a school or a church. But some like Anna and Jack's, that's in a commercial zone. I'm pretty sure they have far more than 35 kids. Even Bright Beginnings, I think, has more than 35 kids. What do you know about that number and how it's used?
Yeah, I'd have to investigate where that came from because most of our definitions got copied and pasted from the original zoning regulations. So I would, I would have to check to see if TPUDC came up with a new definition or this came from the old. And then if it did come from the old, we'd probably have to see where that they came up with it. Because I know when I was going through the research and the, yeah, the permitting at the state level, you can go and select Norwalk's, all of Norwalk's daycare centers and family daycares and go and see how many kids per each. And there is a ton that have like 50 kids. And so how those, yeah, tie into school verse, maybe, yeah, you need daycare center license, but you're really functioning as a school on the land use local level. So that maybe that's the determining factor.
Or is it a state thing? And it would have to do with the ratio of how many adults per child? Because if you have more than 35 kids, I would guess that the adult-child ratio is something like eight to one, maybe. So if you're ending up with five or six cars of parking just for the adults that are there all day, never mind, you know, the parents that come in and out dropping off. So I'm wondering if it's a state regulation because I know these nursery schools are so incredibly highly regulated about the square foot ratio, the, you know, the ratio of students to teachers or child to adult, whatever you want to call it. That I think it's somewhat self-limiting in its own way.
It is. And our current daycare center, our parking requirements are one per teacher, other staff plus one per 20 students. But like you see here carousel, I don't think carousel is in a church, is it? They've got.
There's a church on that corner. I just don't know if they're associated with it. Yeah.
Maybe that's it. Their accessory is to that. But that 35 member would be interesting to better
Better understand where it's coming from.
Yeah. I took a look at our old definition for child daycare centers in the old regulations and it just indicates a child daycare center is cared to more than 12 unrelated or related children on a regular basis. So it doesn't even cap it. It's just more than 12 classifies you as a daycare center. So the 35 is probably that that limitation is probably new in what what TPUDC came up with.
Okay. Is it possible for us to see where that came from? Like if that's something maybe the consultants had recommended and brought in from experience with other towns and such? Yeah, I'm curious to see where that came from. Thank you.
I don't remember hearing that that was a change and I would have been clocking that, I think. I thought under the old regs, I thought under the old regs, we had this, that this was the same. Are you sure this text wasn't in the old regs?
I'll take a, I'm just looking at definitions since how we different than how we do it now. So that section could be somewhere else and I'm not looking within like the actual zones and not in the definitions. So yeah, I can investigate a little more and see what I can come up with.
Look under what it was listed for the special permit limitation. Let me make a note here because yeah, that's just the definition. That's the state definition of a center is that it's more than 12 kids. It could be also that a lot of our existing centers that aren't accessory to whatever the larger structures were just in place and licensed long before this showed up, whenever it did show. But yeah, okay, so we have sort of consensus that size will be self-limiting and also size can be sort of a political factor in how an amendment like this is received or any specific special permit is received and there might be benefits to starting smaller for that reason. But also benefits to a maximalist approach because it's self-limiting.
Oh, I have one more question. Is most of the daycare centers that are accessory to churches are actually in residential zones? Because most churches are in residential zones. You know, like the, the Greek Orthodox Church that has the daycare center, the poor Richard Rowena lives across the street from, and he was so upset. I wonder how that's turned out, how many kids are there? How disruptive that actually is to the neighborhood? You know, what's the experience?
Also, Galen, too, just there's a distinction between a nursery school in a church and a daycare center. So I don't want us to confuse the two because nursery schools, you know, they only go for a few hours a day where daycare implies whole day.
I think, Michelle, isn't it even the ones that are called nursery schools, there if they're like, if they're licensed by OEC, they're either a childcare center, family or a group, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Right. So some like, like Nitsan. There's a Nitsan or is it the other one that's at the synagogue on East Avenue is only a half day, but it's still a childcare center. It's licensed. The, this definition is about how OEC licenses things. So anything more than 12 kids gets licensed as a childcare center.
Regardless of whether it's what you and I traditionally would have called.
Right. The word nursery school is, to my understanding, not in any of the OEC regs. It's used often for kids between like three and five because it's like more school-based. But they can have kids of any ages. They might just choose to only have those older toddlers. But the distinction of childcare center is anything over 12. Zoning tends to, not just in Norwalk, say that childcare centers can only be in the commercial area unless they're accessory used to like a larger building, like a school or a church. And so that's sort of what gets established. But that restriction is entirely a restriction of zoning, not a restriction of OEC. So that's where we come into the idea of, okay, well, what if it's not a church, but it's still a really large lot with a really large building with plenty of space? Or what if it's a group home that has 12 kids and they want to add one more kid? And they have the extra and they have enough staffing. Do we really want to say they can't just because it's not in the right zone? And that's where this question comes in. But okay, coming back to this, let's keep going. So the building typology question, Michelle, do you think we would need to call out existing legally nonconforming or is that sort of covered overall in the zoning regs? That whenever there's sort of a change?
Yeah, I think how the typology, how I understand it, it's for new construction. They're limited to what the typology allows for that zone. So it's in this instance, say it's a single family house that wants to convert to the center. I don't think they need to like make it become like a storefront. Like I think they should be okay, but yeah.
Yeah, I also want to make sure that a building that maybe doesn't necessarily look like a single family home, but is already grandfathered in, but is big enough to like be accommodate more than 12 students or 12 children would be permitted, that it wouldn't be necessarily disallowed by this condition just because the building typology doesn't happen to match, even though the structure is already exists in that neighborhood for some period of time. Does that make sense? Like I want to make sure we're not excluding those properties that already exist and focusing on just like new builds, making sure that if a house is being built with the idea of having more than 12 children, that is consistent with a residential property. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have that sort of language on the corner stores. I like the idea of adding it if we need to. Do you know what the corner stores, if there was an existing thing that wasn't consistent with the permitted, with the newly permitted structures in the zone? If that would still be allowed to become a corner store or if the idea is that they would have to make it consistent with the permitted structures of the zone?
Right. Let me see. I'll have to take a look at how we would handle that because I'm not 100% sure. Because as Chapin indicated, I think it makes sense. I don't think it's supposed to be in a limiting way. But I think the idea is for like new construction to have that certain look of what we're asking for in the zone, but it sure, yeah.
That makes a lot of sense. I, yeah, I appreciate that. I would love to find some way to clarify this and possibly even the corner store piece. Just that way, folks who are interested in, you know, doing such a project have confidence in coming into the zoning office and saying like, hey, like, I'd like to do this and knowing that they they need the regulations.
Right.
That makes sense. Um, okay, the line, all parking is located aside or rear, rear not visible for everybody in parcels. I pulled that in again from the cornerstone's thing. Chapin suggested that if if we needed, if we decide to keep this instead of just saying not visible, but we could say is screened from abutting parcels, the the parking things that currently exist for centers. Just say off-street parking areas shall comply with applicable regulations. And then in, Michelle had put together a list of possible things sort of after we got started with this. And put it in this way. If you can see that, doesn't impair parking flow, traffic flow and has adequate provision for parking pickup, drop off. No parking permitted between principal building and public street, one parking space for each employee. I don't know where we want to go with this.
One of my hopes overall for this is that it'll add more capacity in neighborhoods. That way folks can like walk to the daycare center and drop off their kids there. I think parents would prefer to do that and not have to load up a car. So my hope is that overall, like this is reducing vehicles mild traveled. But, you know, I still think it's important to, you know, make sure that residential areas are not being impacted by people who are driving in as well. So yeah, I'm not sure if we need both. I also know that the special permit plays a role as well in the criteria that's there. But I agree to the screening and I like the idea of one parking space per employee. And not necessarily per kid or maybe like, we have one that's like per employee plus one, that way there is a space if somebody needs to pull into the driveway to do a pickup or drop off. But I'm not sure.
The current requirements that are already there say one, they say one staff per, what was it, 20 kids or one parking space per staff plus per 20 kit. Like there's already sort of a requirement in the zoning regulation related to parking. I just wanted to call that out.
You know, the thing Chapin unfortunately is that the lots that are big enough to accommodate this are in the parts of Norwalk where you can't walk. You know, up where I live, you cannot, you know, nobody can walk from anywhere to anywhere.
Well, when Jim Travers is done building all those sidewalks, Galen, maybe. Well, when Jim Travers is done building all those sidewalk scaling, maybe, but that's a pipe dream, but you're right.
Some of them, some of them, but like.
To see sidewalks on West Norwalk Road, I don't believe. Or, and I was just driving down Philo, oh my God, this, if they try to widen the sidewalks, which are like two feet. If that.
They will. They're doing it by the train station and we're waiting right now. Nobody thought it could be done, but it's being done.
Well, there are stone walls on the one side.
Yeah.
And there is road on the other and he narrowed the road and you couldn't squeeze two cars. So it's gonna be a challenge.
But also remember this, this, this just allows people to go above twelve. So like my current daycare that has. Twelve and I know she would love to go above. I've no idea if she ever will be able to or not. A lot of people walk their kids there. It's totally residential neighborhood. If something like this allowed her to go to thirteen or fourteen, you know, or fifteen or something like that. I don't think it's the case that, that, that the only places that would be able to take advantage of this would be the huge lots in the Bootons. Um, there's that option. There's also this incremental expansion option.
Think, think of the area like behind the hospital, right? Where the houses are fairly close together and now we have this new parking restriction where. The cars are not supposed to be seen by the abutting neighbor. That entire area, which is fairly densely populated, is all now. Out of parking code, if you will. I think the, I think we're gonna run into a problem. With this, the new regulations that we passed in February with these parking and parking in the rear and screening from other lots. And so we're gonna have row after row of Arbor Vitae along driveways that basically touch one another. It's not. Uh, perhaps realistic. I mean, maybe it's a nice dream because then we would have more greenery. But we live with cars. People want cars, they need cars and the vast majority of people, even if they're only going a short distance, like. A tenth of a mile, get in their car and drive. So. It's, it's such a double edged sword and we need. We need these daycares in resident, residential areas. But yet our own parking requirements are going to. Limit what we're trying to achieve because these regulations are kind of stringent.
I just wanted to bring us back and this is why I was pulling up. These are the sort of special permit considerations. That apply to anything. So we'll be able to consider the impact on neighborhood. Properties, right? Which could include theoretically parking problems, adverse impact from. Noise, adequacy of screening and buffering, adequacy. Adequacy, adequacy of open space. Um, so. You know, we may not need to write those things. In additionally underneath the, the, the specific use limitation.
I think that's a good idea. Just leave the code the way.
Yeah, for the other, it already said, what it already says existing is just outdoor play areas and off-street parking areas comply with the applicable regulation. Um, which is. One per teacher or other staff plus one per twenty students and then require the special permit, which gives you that other list of things. That includes consideration of screening, consideration of these things. So. Remove this.
I'm good with that.
You're good with that. Um, and Michelle, are you good with that and not going for this? That logic makes sense.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember where those came from, no parking station. Yeah, that makes sense.
Come back up here. Hours of operation limited to six to eight. I pulled that from the corner stores. Because the idea of like where we are, where we are allowing commercial businesses in residential neighborhoods. How are we doing this with hours? I don't think Michelle had anything about hours. Um, as somebody was talking about. The hours tend to vary depending on. You know, what the provider wants to provide, right? Like I know it can sometimes be a struggle to find a provider who allows you to pick up as late as six or. You know, um, let alone eight. I've never seen anybody that allows you to come at eight. Do we like the idea of having this here? Makes sense, given the corner stores.
I guess so.
Yeah, I have no opposition to it.
Okay. Uh, the doesn't impair traffic flow, safety, drop off, pickup. Michelle had pretty much the same thing. I don't think that in general, I don't think we should require a traffic study. Like by default, I think that should remain. Option, an option, and I think. Uh, that's the way it is. Where is it? Here.
Can't imagine a daycare center wanting to spring for a traffic study.
Right. Um, a traffic impact analysis may be required. That's in the special permit thing. So we already have that. Option.
And that's at our discretion, right?
And that's entirely at our discretion. Um, so I'm gonna take. Yeah. Does not create noise problems. Um, and Chapin saying, should we look at screening? Um, when I'm looking at this, this allows us to consider noise. So is it sort of duplicative to have something like this in here or would it make it more palatable? To anybody in the public who's concerned by this general idea to have it specifically called out. I don't know. Did Michelle have anything about noise? Not really. What do you guys think?
Is that about indoor noise, outdoor noise? Like is somebody gonna object because they have a playground at a daycare?
I don't know. I just threw that in.
I would leave it out. It's just asking for trouble.
I just wanted to add, I, I would agree to remove it because it does kind of catch all within the special permit criteria, but I mean, it is. I think. For the impact to the neighbor. So and even when, I forget what application it was, when one of the schools wanted to add like a core, a lot of people spoke against. You know, a play court, um, kids playing next door to their house and things like that. So I think, um. Yeah, something to make a note of, but worth removing.
See, I have a question. I should probably know the answer to this, but like, let's say the hours are six AM to eight PM that are allowed. Uh, for, for daycares. For this kind of business, but even with the small family daycares. I was reading that they have overnight daycares. Because there are people who work at night and they can't leave their children home alone at night while they're working. Um, so they had overnight daycares where the kids would go at like eight PM and get picked up at six AM. If someone came in and said, I want to be able to do that for ten kids. You know, I have the facilities, I can get this staff, et cetera. Can we allow it?
So if it was for ten kids, it wouldn't be covered by this regulation now. It would be, if O E C was allowing it. It would be licensed as a group daycare. Which is permitted as a right in the residential zones.
Okay, so.
So it wouldn't even sort of come up.
Yeah, they could do it for up to twelve kids, you said, right?
A place that's registered as a daycare center that maybe during the day operates with, say eighteen. Uh, wouldn't be able to have ten overnight. Is that right?
If we put, so I'm not sure what O E C says about overnight for centers. I don't know if they say anything at all. But if we put this in, then yeah, they wouldn't be able to overnight kids at a residential based. Center.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, I hadn't thought about the overnight piece. I'd be interested to look into that a little bit more and see if there's a component of that that. Fits into this uh that we can consider here. But I, yeah, I, I, I need to look into it more. I don't know much about the overnight operations.
It's a real problem for like nurses that work different shifts.
Sure. And with the hospital being one of the major employers in town, that would be great to be able to give those folks options. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Anecdotally, I've only heard of overnights being actually at the family. Um, daycare level, which is six or less. But I don't, I've never looked into it. I don't know what the O E C regs say about it. So I put it in a note here. Um, Michelle, could you look at that? Either look at the regs or ask Mary Oster?
Yeah, I can um put it on my list of things to take a look at further and then um just. Thinking about um. The palability of the regulation, I feel like I, as I understand it, it would be a good thing not to limit it and have it be able to be offered. But then if there is neighbors that are totally against it and it's like, oh, and you're gonna be doing this at night too. It's like they can't, like they probably might not feel like they can. Can't escape it, like there's gonna be kids there all the time. So, yeah, and I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense for a smaller scale to do overnights. Instead of at a center, but um it, it's a good point to bring up and brush out.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think it's like, like. I don't necessarily think it's a great idea to. Have centers doing overnights in residential neighborhoods, but we should know whether it's allowed or not and whether it's a need. Because if it's not allowed, there's no point. And if it is allowed, do we want to build in some flexibility? Around that and not cut that off.
Overnight for the neighbors is easy because the kids are sleeping.
That's if your kid sleeps.
But they're not out on the playground is what I'm saying, you know.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah.
Inside, if they're not sleeping, they're at least not sleeping inside.
Yeah. And so this is what is already existing. For the centers that are currently allowed in the commercial areas that already. For that, like this is already there. So.
Do we want to remove two D based on um what we saw in the special permit? And also what we see in uh. Uh, three C, like does it make sense to keep two D as well? Sorry if I missed that piece. I, I thought we were talking about that as well as part of the. Removing the noise component, but sorry to jump back to Sonia.
Sort of fifty fifty. What do you guys think?
But to take out D in the red does not impair the traffic.
Because we have all of this stuff under the special permit.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. It sort of is redundant if, as long as that's followed. I don't know. If it was a school. Would we have the ability to say that?
I don't know anything about school.
Yeah, well, the schools get carte blanche the way um I see it most of the time, but. We don't get any say in that, like the neighbors don't get any say in the new South Newark school. They just have to go with it.
I think I would just add to that note of whether to keep it in is that it does give it a little more um. Like specifics, it's not like must not uh impair traffic flow, but then it says specifically for this, like. You know, student pickup and queuing and things that are pretty particular for this type of use in regards to the traffic. Not just like someone like saying, it's not gonna impair, that's like what we always hear is like, oh, won't impair traffic. It's like, well, how? So this kind of says, show us how, but.
Cause it speaks to, I think what a lot of. Uh, neighbors' concerns would be and also gives direction to the applicant of like, please have a plan for this. Please be prepared to talk about this. Yeah. Okay, so this is all here. Um. And then this was Tammy's question, how many teachers, how many cars? Um. We, I don't know if you have that, the child caregiver ratio, ratio under O E C, Michelle.
I don't off the top of my head.
We certainly don't need more than one space per employee.
Yeah, right now the requirement is one plate, space per staff. Plus one for every twenty children. Um.
Does a daycare center really have one adult and twenty kids and that's it? I mean, is that, Anna, I don't have anybody little in daycare. Is that what the ratio is? Twenty to one?
No, no, that's not the staffing ratio. Um, and that's not the. Parking, the parking is one parking spot for everyone's staff. Plus, so here's the.
In addition to one for every staff, in addition, I don't know why they want one for every twenty children, because none of the children drive.
Well, right, but that means because somebody's coming and picking up and dropping off at.
Right.
At the same time. So these things do kind of become self-limiting in a way because. Let's just say it's five to one, whatever the ratio is. And so if there's fifteen kids, you have to have three adults. So therefore probably three cars. I mean, if it's in a residential zone, maybe the owner lives there and that car is in the garage. But there are two other people that need to park in the driveway and then there, if fifteen kids are coming in and out. You know, four at a time or whatever, um, you've got to have enough space to accommodate that or people will be parking on the street. And that's what's gonna bother the neighbors.
Right.
And I know, I know it's saying that we need to have, there should be a parking requirement regardless, but just anecdotally, I can tell you that. Uh, my kids daycare, very few of the staff actually drive and park their cars. They either get dropped off for work or in some cases the owner picks them up because they don't drive or they don't have cars. Or they carpool or they walk.
And you live in East Norwalk?
I do live in East Norwalk and this is, uh, but again, that's anecdotal. We. There, there should be. I think. Obviously, like new places that are looking to expand should have sufficient parking for their staff.
Yeah.
On site, the same as any other business, right? Requires parking onsite, not in the street, like we were just looking at for um.
Yeah, and everybody's driveway is gonna be a little bit different. You might have somebody with a circular driveway that could be great. You might have somebody. Does only one car width, it's gonna be terrible. You might have somebody with two car wide that would be better.
Right.
But.
What I've seen and also with um visiting, because I had a whole spreadsheet of thirty centers that I like visited and interviewed for my kid. The biggest issue seemed not to be with staff parking, but with queuing at drop off. And the in and out and like whatever, and each space has its own challenges. But if you were gonna expand or do like a new business, just like any new business that zoning approves. You know, we want to make it. Good from day one.
Sure.
Okay, well, I can't find it, but um.
Can you just get us whatever the ratios are of daycare provider to, to child, whatever it is?
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay.
So I think that will kind of help calm any fears or it will point to what we need to look at more.
Yeah. Okay, the, and then here's the ideas from Michelle. Uh, the facility, the facility be licensed in accordance with state of Connecticut. We don't have that. In the current um. Requirements, just so you know.
It probably should be in there, right?
Probably, maybe should be.
We've run into like a chicken and egg scenario on something like this before where like somebody, we, we require them to have the license, but they tell us that they need zoning approval. Before they can get the license, right? And I, I'm not sure if this is.
This has happened specifically with daycare. I've seen it where the application for the license. Or the application to expand the license or change the license says, do you have zoning approval? And.
All right, so then can, can we make it so that the person can at least apply to the city? And we approve it if we do? And we approve it if we do, and then they go to the state? Because which comes first? The chicken or the egg is really, in essence, what we're saying, right?
Yeah, how do we do with everything else? With cannabis has to be licensed, with everything that has to be licensed. Do we put it in the special permit regulation?
Yeah, and that's what I just thought about when you guys um were discussing was the cannabis, because it, that happened there, too. And I think it boiled down to. It catch all upon final. They get there for their final, can be kind of squared away then.
Yes.
Is it a condition that we need to keep in uh so that way you guys are able to point to it when issuing that CO? Or TV?
Yeah, it'll be written, or we could put it. In a way where it won't. Require them upfront to provide the license, but maybe like with the understanding that what they're proposing must comply with uh whatever the state is gonna require. But the license itself won't have to be provided to the city until, you know. They go for their final CO. So something to that nature, I think, might help.
Yeah, I just wonder whether it's really needed at all if we haven't. Had anything about it. Previously. Because O E C is responsible for making sure that they meet all their requirements of their license. Right, before they license them. Um, outdoor players being enclosed by a fence, I believe O E C requires. And we don't currently. Have that. In their. Can we take that out?
Yeah.
Yeah. Minimum one acre lot. I have no sense of size of anything.
I do. That's a big lot.
Yeah.
That's gonna eliminate half of Norwalk, okay?
Yeah.
That, that's not um, that's not doable, in my opinion, especially in neighborhoods where you have. Density of population that need these daycares. You know. Norwalk Silvermine is acre zoning. So, South Norwalk, Row Eight and East Norwalk. There are basically no one acre zones there.
So can we just keep it with this? Five hundred square feet of lot per child, which it was already anyway. And that's the self-limiting, and it would, if somebody wants to do thirty-five kids, then it has to be. That much bigger.
I think an acre is six thousand four hundred and thirty-two square feet. Is that right, Michelle? So.
Yeah.
So that divided. I mean, it's really, that's probably too. High. If you live behind an old hospital on a tenth of an acre plus or a quarter of an acre minus. So that's three thousand square feet, five hundred, that's six kids. In my math.
So Tammy, are you saying that we can? That we can keep this or that this?
It's, it should be a lower ratio, like four, three hundred, two hundred or something. I, I can't do it right the second where I am, but I could figure it out and come back with what something should be and say. They're very. There aren't that many quarter acre plus. Lots in. The core, more densely populated areas where we want people to walk to daycare, right? I mean, in East Norwalk, let's just say, there's, there is certainly quarter acre zoning. But a quarter of an acre, just call it. Three thousand square feet, not even, right? I, I need to go on Google.
We should also check if the O E C regulations have a requirement.
Right, let's do that. And I'm sorry, because I'm at this home inspection and I'm not like prepared at my computer or something. I can't really do all this right off the top of my head. But I can look at it. And I think. You know, never mind thirty-five kids. That's, you know, you're not even gonna get five kids.
Right. Okay, is this reasonable? Let's check if there's a lot size requirement within the O E C regulations. If so, we can just match that. Right, but if not, five hundred might be too high.
Yes.
Fit in the parking and they have to fit in a playground. So a lot of these small lots aren't gonna work no matter what.
Right.
Unfortunately.
Um, okay, the lot shall front on a collector arterial street. And have direct or convenient access to such road.
As opposed to what? Like a main. A lane of what, like? I was a little confused by why that was there.
Sure, I think this more or less has to do, which is, I mean, I guess a couple points where it's. Ties into um. Some of the larger lots on septic, whether or not um they'll have to make those improvements. Uh, we'll have to check with the health department to see what they're comfortable with kid wise. I mean, I know churches occupy residential lots. And they can have substantial amount of people, but this is more on a regular basis. So we'll just have to see what makes the most sense. But um, so what DPW determines, like a collector arterial, they're just like more of like the main roads. Not like a state road or like Connecticut Ave or anything, but they're more of like the ones that people navigate. To get to places through.
Like, like East Avenue or. Phil, I don't know, West Norwalk Road, Row Eighten Avenue, um.
Yeah, let me.
Gregory Boulevard. Honestly, I don't see why we're trying to limit what kind of street a daycare center can be on. If somebody has, lives off of Newtown Avenue. On a cute little quiet lane, as long as this, you know, this is gonna be up to the health department if they have septic and it can't accommodate it. I don't think we should regulate that. It's defeating the purpose. We're trying to make this more welcoming, not less welcoming.
I agree.
Good point.
And also, if you're with a kid, little kid, and you're trying to get out on the street. You want, you don't want to be on. East Avenue, Route One, whatever it is, you know, you want to get your kid out on a quiet street.
Yeah, cul-de-sac would be perfect.
Exactly.
Tammy, just so you know, I don't disagree with you, uh, but because I'm not sure if you can see the screen share. What Michelle put was that it should front on one of those streets or have direct and convenient access to such road. So there's.
But.
It's limiting.
Yeah, I think it's limiting. And do we really need to say that? Like, I think we should try to make this not more wordy, but less wordy. And I'm not trying to shoot down your idea, Michelle. I'm sorry. Don't, don't, don't take it personally, but it's just like, we're, we're over regulating something that we want to have.
Sure, yeah, and I think that makes sense. A lot of the, the items are what other towns within the state do. So I kind of compiled, pulled from multiple towns and cities throughout Connecticut and compiled them. So this is just what.
Michelle, did you find other towns that allow centers in residential zones?
Yes, it was um. A handful of them do, but they're like, a lot of the material, the items here are, they're heavily regulated based on where they can really go. Um, but there was, yeah, some that do daycare centers in residential zones.
Can, do you remember the name of those towns?
I can share my um, my read, my list here. I like went to each town and just copy and paste definitions. What they restrict it by, um, if it's allowed by principal user accessory, I kind of.
Thank you. I'm just curious, because when I tried to search, um. I couldn't find many. And it seemed like it was just sort of. Standard zoning practice. Uh, even though it's not required by O E C. So I'd just be curious about that.
Yeah, I can share that and.
Okay. I'm gonna put this in here, or Tammy, uh, not Tammy, uh, Galen Chapin, do you guys have thoughts about, about this limitation?
I think I need to see a map uh of, of what those roadways are in town. I remember seeing one during the um. Capital budget discussions. I, I'm trying to pull it up here on my other screen and just struggling.
We have it in our email. I just.
I don't see why you would limit it, that's all.
I agree, Tammy. I don't see why we would limit it either. Because in some cases, a cul-de-sac could be great.
Yes, you know, I did have this on in the winter and it was nice.
Yeah, no, I, I agree as well. And uh, yeah, I thought a map might help, just to kind of see like, is this limited or is this just? Like stating, I, I don't know. I, I guess I just want to see a map to understand what it means.
The map of this.
Oh, you do? Let me stop my screen. Share.
Thanks. As a heads up, I do have to drop in a couple of minutes here, but uh, I'm good to keep.
Let's take a quick look at the map and then we could sort of put a button with it and. Set up a second meeting and maybe at that meeting, Michelle will have some answers to these questions.
Is it up or did it?
Yeah, it's up.
All right, um, so the arterial, so RDBW has a major or minor, and then the collector is the green. So we're kind of looking at the blue, green roads in the pink, so. It's basically just not the little short roads, but as you guys were discussing, maybe those are more ideal on cul-de-sacs, but.
Yeah, like, look at Jane Avenue, like, that'd be a great little street, right? Off of Spring Hill and off of Phillows Street. I mean, those are, to me, those are where you would want your. Nice peaceful little daycares. For all those sleeping children, right?
For all those good little angels.
Right.
Thanks, Michelle, for bringing this up. Yeah, I, I'm okay with us not having this uh condition on here. Although I, I do think the way it's worded, it seems like it would allow any street in Norwalk, if I'm looking at this map correctly. That's at least how I'm interpreting what's, what's written is. Uh, the, or having direct and convenient access to such road. It looks like that covers just about every street, so.
Okay, so let's take this one out. Thank you. Just the one, one thing I wanted to ask about, the facilities operated by a resident of the property, you know. I thought that that would be required already for like. The group and family daycares. But it's actually not required. It's just, that's what people tend to, to do, because then they're not paying for a separate property from their own. Home.
Right.
So. I wonder. If we need to require this.
Let's just type. Say, somebody wanted to rent my house because I've got a nice big space. I've got a big driveway. I've got whatever it takes and they want to pay me. Do, do we, as the P and Z, want to limit somebody from doing that if it fit a need?
Right.
I like this condition as it uh. Ensures that the residential properties like ultimately serve the residential purpose, right? That it's not just a like commercial space in a, a residential zone. You know, we, we've talked a lot about housing, uh, housing availability. And so I worry about like someone coming in and buying up a bunch of homes or renting out a bunch of homes. And uh, turning them into daycares and then, you know, it's less, less places for people to sleep at night. So looking at this and just like, you know, I, uh, like, I, I kind of like it, but I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm open to, to hear.
Well, I also, I was surprised recently, I found out that um. Somebody. Who operates, I'm not sure if it was a family or group. Home that they live in. Bought another house in another part of town to open a second. Group or family home. But obviously, they will not be living there because they live in the first one, and they're not planning to have any of the staff. Live there. It's gonna be an entirely. Commercial daycare, just at the family or the group level. And I didn't realize that was allowed, but it is. So if we were to put in this requirement.
Maybe we put in language like to the greatest extent possible or something, because you're right. That's a good, you know, people do tricky things and then you could have some daycare company, like, I don't know, if there's a national chain of them. Saying, oh, yeah, I'm just buying up all this residential property. I don't know if the profit margins are there for somebody to want to do that with the price of real estate these days. And the property taxes, but. Maybe we. Put something in to help that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking is how could you ever make a profit if you had to buy another house?
Yeah, you couldn't these days.
Yeah. Well, the interesting thing is that, you know, centers historically being in commercial neighborhoods, there are national. Chains, right, that have them. Um, or not national, maybe Connecticut-based chains that have them, and people don't generally live. On commercial, in commercial properties on Westport or Connecticut Avenue, right? So. I can see wanting to say if there's gonna be a center.
All right, so let's make it, then maybe that is a good one to make a little bit more restrictive.
Yeah.
Another option perhaps is like, instead of saying resident. Um, requiring somebody to live there, but at least the operation is like owner operated. Or you're saying whoever owns the.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Operated instead of saying like the resident.
Now, that's a good idea, Michelle.
Yeah, I like that. Owner operated and uh acts as a residence, like outside of.
Owner occupied, owner operated, occupied.
Right, too, we want to have like. Essentially a house in a residential neighborhood where nobody is. Sleeping there, there overnight. Like.
No.
Probably not.
No. Commercial. Then you're turning it into a commercial zone inadvertently.
Yep.
Um, site. Living there. With residential use. I don't know. Can figure out the language, but.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, okay, let's come back to this. And we can email about a follow-up meeting time.
Yes.
I have to go answer my door.
Alright, uh, motion to uh, end the meeting.
I'll make the motion and thank you, everybody, and Michelle, thank you. And thanks for typing. For Michelle, who's ever doing the typing. I'll look up about the lot sizes.
Thank you, Tammy.
Handful of things as well and follow up, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Stay cool. Bye.